My PTSD.
I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivor Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Lord God, we ask you to continue to convict the hearts of those who are both within and outside of this city. Father God, continue to convict us with a heart of purity, Father God, a heart of forgiveness, a heart of love, Father God, and a heart of understanding. Father, we thank you, Father, for the love and the grace that you've shown to us, Father, and we ask that you will instill in us, Father, that same kind of gracious love and unforgiving love and forgiving love, Father God. And through it all, Father God, we ask that you will continue to rise up and be mighty in the midst of all of our situations, Father God. Father God, please instill a spirit of peace, Father God, a spirit of understanding, Father God, and a spirit of unity. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll call on Ms. Deborah Gaither, our EMA Director, for an update.
Good morning. First, I want to talk about last week's drive-through.
Is it on now?
There you go.
Okay. First, we want to talk about last week's drive-through at Antioch. It was a success. We had 123 people to go through. There were still people in line when the drive-through was over, so we hate that we couldn't get to everyone, but we just didn't have enough staffing to extend the timeframe of the event. There were 30 positives for COVID that were found in that drive-through clinic, so we hope that we were able to answer some citizens' questions with that clinic, and we certainly appreciate Antioch Baptist Church for allowing us to use the property there. We are going to continue our weekly planning and preparedness calls on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. for elected officials, and we're also going to continue our weekly situation reports for COVID. You should receive one this afternoon, and it'll be number 55. So we're going to continue those until the end so that we can keep a good log in track of what's happened throughout Gadsden and Edouard County during this COVID event. I want to say thank you to Ms. Wright. Our COVID testing and vaccination trailer has been ordered and is in the works. The supplies have been ordered, and some of those supplies even came in just in time last week for that drive-through clinic, and we appreciate Eric for delivering those on-site. It's important for us to be able to disinfect and put our equipment back up so that it's prepared for the next event, and it's been hard to do the last couple of times because we didn't have everything that we needed, COVID supplies, such as disinfectant and that type of thing. So we're glad that came in just in time and Eric delivered that. I think we're still waiting on a few items to come in to do our senior adult COVID project, but it is in line and it's about to take place. I'll get with Eric later on in the week, and we'll find out exactly what we need, and we're going to have to set up a group that's willing to help us with that because it's a large project. It's approximately 25,000 that we're going to have to put together and do, so we'll get it done. That's what I meant, 2,500, 25,000, 2,500. Just glad that wasn't money. There you go. 2,500 is what I meant. Sorry about that. And then in your hands, you have two forms on our letterhead. One is the Ambu Bus COVID Project, and I know you haven't seen this. This was presented to the Edouard County Commission as a project for them to help us with so that we could reach further outside of the City of Gadsden and do some things. So I wanted you to see exactly what we were asking them for. One is the Ambu Bus COVID Project. The Ambu Bus, we've talked about before. We have converted it. The City Fleet Department worked very hard in getting all that installed into that bus and taking the seats out, so it is ready to go. We're just waiting for the supplies to go into it, and we'll start using it where we can to do some COVID testing and possibly, in the beginning of next year, some vaccination sites. Also, you'll see that you have another form that's the COVID Response and Mitigation Project, and it tells you exactly what we have asked for from the County Commission out of their CARES funding to respond to events throughout Edouard County. So the items that we had asked the city for, you could tell, were different from what these were, and there had been some questions about that, so I wanted to make sure that y'all were aware of all of the projects. And then finally, I think, Mayor, if you would like to come up to, and Angela? We do have another event that is scheduled for testing, and it's on August the 20th, and it will be from 8:00 a.m. until noon. We're going to do this one until noon. And I want to say thank you already to Gadsden Public Works, Gadsden Parks, I mean, Gadsden Police Department, the Fire Department, the EMA staff, and even the Edouard County Sheriff's Department, because we're preparing for a large drive-through with these individuals. So I'm going to let the mayor introduce Angela to you, and Angela's going to tell you a little bit about the event and what we'll be doing on August the 20th.
Thank you. COVID-19 hotspot testing schedule. Gadsden, Alabama, the City of Gadsden, and the East Alabama Area Health Education Centers, AHEC, are hosting a free COVID-19 hotspot testing clinic on August the 20th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. until noon in the parking lot of Gadsden City High School. A variety of organizations and agencies are partnering to offer this free testing opportunity. The University of Alabama at Birmingham, UAB, is providing the test kits and the lab work for the test through allocation from the CARES Act. Partners include UAB, Alabama Department of Public Health, Gadsden-Edouard Industrial Development Authority, Gadsden Fire Department, Gadsden Police Department, Gadsden Public Works, Gadsden-Edouard Emergency Management, and Civil Air Patrol. 150 tests have been allocated for this drive-through testing clinic. Those getting tested will stay in their vehicles to ensure that the testing is as efficient and safe as possible. The Civil Air Patrol will fly the test swabs to UAB, and will perform the necessary lab work. Those getting tested for COVID-19 will be contacted with their test results within 48 hours. Tests will be administered on a first-come, first-served basis, and the testing kits are limited. The tests are being provided free, and no insurance information will be collected. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Angela Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the East Central Alabama AHEC. You guys probably remember me from our RAM project that has been tabled but has been tentatively rescheduled for April 16th through 18th, 2021. Let's all pray that we are at a juncture that we can do our RAM clinic on that weekend. If not, it will simply be moved forward again. We will eventually have it. In the meantime, we have been pulled in to help our Health Department to do some of the testing that's needed in our area. We know that Edouard County is kind of at the top, one of the top counties that is having a problem with COVID, and so we wanted to provide testing in areas that are, that seem to be hotspots. We met with Chief Carroll. He keeps a map, as I'm sure you probably all know, and we're addressing the first one of those. We feel like that if this goes well, and certainly we think it will be very easy and simple and will be something that our citizens will respond to, and if they do, we, this will not be the last one that we have in this area. We have gotten some CARES money to make sure that our area is well-tested, particularly in the areas that need the testing the most, and so that's where we're going. Please, it is the less invasive nasal swab. You don't have to get out of your car. We will need some identification simply to contact them and let them know they'll be contacted if they are positive or if they're negative, but there will be no other information taken, no money collected, no insurance needed. So please let everyone know, this is about as simple as it can possibly get to be tested. And, you know, we will not ask if you've ever been tested before or anything like that. If you feel the need to be tested, you're welcome to get in line and be tested on August the 20th. Are there any questions?
No, you just answered. So to be clear, if somebody wants to be retested, they can get in that line?
They can get in that line. We will not really even ask them if they've been tested prior to this, so we want to make this, this is, of course, sort of the, I'm repeating the things that I said about RAM, but we want easy access to people in our community, to health care and the things that they need. Of course, the data will be transmitted by the lab totally anonymously, but to our Health Department so that it can be counted in with our numbers.
I have a question, ma'am. You said it won't be that invasive, the note, you're going to do the throat swab?
No, it is a nasal swab, but it is not, you do not have to go as deep. They have better testing now, and so this is what UAB puts out. So actually, the person in the car usually can do it themselves. There'll be a provider there to help them, but they could, they can do it themselves, and they pass it along, and we, you know, label it and put it on ice so that the lab can have a proper sample.
Thank you. We appreciate what you all are doing.
Thanks for your support.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on August 4th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to rediffy payments of accounts for the week of July 31st through August the 6th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to rediffy payment of the accounts.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have none. We've already done the proclamation and the presentation. Our next item for number 11, a resolution awarding bid number 3438 for concrete work. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to CBNA Construction, which is LLC, and the amount is $7,847.83. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is an awarding bid number 3439 for drainage work, and the city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to CBNA Construction LLC, and the amount The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is the awarding bid number 3440 for asphalt patching, and the city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to James E. Watson Son LLC, and the amount is $10,166.35. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have a couple of items that I'd like to ask for consideration under new business. The first is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien at 1606 Baker Avenue. Again, I'd like to ask for consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Seven.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. The second item that I'd like to ask for consent to consider today is a resolution authorizing satisfaction of a nuisance abatement lien at 1609 Murray Avenue.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any department reports, committee, boards? Okay, we have, yes, I'm sorry.
Council Mayor, Madam President, my name's Craig Scott, Director of the Gadsden Public Library. Just real quick, I'd like to give a report about the library. We closed on March 17. We've remained closed, but that's given us an opportunity to completely inventory the, all the collections that the library has, that includes our branches, and make sure that everything that we have is there, and also, it's given us an opportunity to thoroughly clean and make sure that the library's in the best shape that it is. And so I'm very proud of the staff for everything that they've been doing. In addition, we are checking out materials. Last month, we checked out 1,169 items. So the library is very active, even though the doors are closed, and I want to encourage the community, they can reserve books and movies online or just call us at the main library number. We'll be glad to recommend materials if somebody needs a good recommendation, or if they have a book in mind, we'll be glad to check it out curbside for them. Secondly, census. The census is extremely important, and I'd like to encourage the community to make sure that they fill out their census forms. Couple of calculations. Right now, Gadsden, the City of Gadsden, we have about 35,000 people, according to the Census Bureau, their latest estimates, 35,000 live in our community. Of that, 60% of the folks have done their census. That's about 21,000 of the 35,000. That leaves 14,000 unaccounted for yet, 14,000. The Census Bureau says that $1,600 in federal tax money comes back to the community every year per person. That 14,000 folks that have not been counted yet, times $1,600, is $22.4 million next year. And since we only do a census every 10 years, not till 2030, that 22.4 million turns into 224 million over the next 10 years. Now, I didn't do any inflation calculations either. That 224 million is low, so everybody needs to do their census. The Carver Community Revitalization Committee on September 5th is going to do a door-to-door campaign in three neighborhoods. They'll be identified. Larry Avery will be managing that, and he's looking for volunteers. I'll be volunteering myself. That's a Saturday, September 5th, and it'll start at 10:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, let me ask you, do you have an update on Alabama City Library today?
Yeah, I can give that to you. The library remains closed over there, but Alabama City last January was a public library. We changed that because the community needed a change over there, and we made it entirely a genealogy library. We moved our entire genealogy collection from our fourth floor, no windows, no restrooms, over to Alabama City, where there are two other private libraries, the Edward Historical Society and the Elliott Center, and then the Northeast Alabama Genealogical Society and the Nichols Library. It brought our three genealogy collections together. We were all set to go, and then the virus hit. So we'll be promoting that once we reopen the doors again as a genealogy hub, and with tourism, help from Hugh at the Tourism Office, we'd love to create a genealogy trail, just like there's a craft beer trail, a barbecue trail, and that sort of thing. We'll create a genealogy trail.
That's good information, Craig. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, we have one citizen request, Mario Richardson Ray, uplifting our community.
Good morning. First, I want to say it is an honor to be able to speak before you all today. I do want to say, I did not write this down, but I do want to say how encouraging it is for our mayor and our city council to speak on the homeless situation in our city. It's awesome that y'all are putting that at the forefront. I heard what every councilperson had to say. I believe everything y'all said about it, and I agree with everything y'all said about it. I'm looking forward to see how y'all, you know, step forward and figure that out. That should be awesome. I come here today as a citizen of Gadsden, Alabama. I also come here today representing my group, the Gadsden Freedom Coalition, formerly known as Gadsden Freedom Fighters. My topic today is uplifting the community. I do want to, before I get started on my speech, I just think we should get a little bit of forethought on what that actually means. The word uplift means to elevate or to stimulate. When we say uplift, the first thing that comes to mind, we think about enriching, right? To encourage, almost to get something started, right? This city has been at a turning point for the past, I want to say, at least six months. There've been many issues that people like myself have brought to you all. We've laid it out here, and we've put it on the forefront, putting Gadsden right out in front of a movement that is sparking up all over this country. Until last week, I was not super encouraged about how we were responding to it, but I do want to say that I don't see seven members of the council who don't want something done, and a mayor who don't want something done. I see seven members and a mayor who do want something done. I see seven members and a mayor who actually care about this, hopefully, and I look forward to working with you all, with our group, and with our community's support with getting things done. Mario, what do you mean, getting things done? There's a divide in our community. This divide goes economically, it goes racially. There's a homeless community, there's a lot packaged in this. Unfortunately, we're at an economic downturn, to say the least, right? Our wonderful Congress could not decide on sending out $1,200 tonight, so that's a problem. We have many other problems that face us economically, which create a whole nother whirlwind of issues for us. I do want to say that it is encouraging to know that we have some members on this council who do and will and are spearheading things to get true economic and systemic change in our city. I told myself that I wouldn't get up here and just say statue. I wouldn't say that word, all right? But I do want you to know something. It's less to do with what it is, it's more to do with what it represents. We call ourselves the City of Champions, City of Champions. As I look at this esteemed council colleagues and activists, I see positions and people in those positions that would not have happened 70 years ago, and I am encouraged by that. As a young African-American male that lives in this city, it is inspiring to see the change that this city has went through, and I do want you to know that you're at the forefront of that change. But because you are at the forefront of that change, you're in a unique position. History has a weird way of looking at us. It causes us to look at ourselves through 2020, watch ourselves and see the decisions that we actually made. To uplift means to elevate or to stimulate, and our city needs a stimulus. Not a stimulus package, and I'm not talking about economically either. No, 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 no. We need to know that we are united in this fight that we have against coronavirus, against racial divides, against financial struggles. This city needs to know that. We need to know that we stand together. How do we get there? We get there by joining together, by connected hands.
If I didn't tell you, I'm sorry that you only have five minutes.
I understand. I appreciate you letting me speak to you today. I look forward to speaking to you all in the future.
At this time, we'll have comments from, we thank you. At this time, we'll have comments from, or announcements from Mayor, Council. Mayor, you have any?
Jobs and training. There's amazing things over at Gadsden State Community College. You can learn how to do all kinds of things to get you a good-paying job. We also have a lot of auto suppliers out here that supply for Honda, Mercedes, and several of those companies, and they're always looking for people. I have them call me all the time, and I try to, anybody that's questioned about a job, I try to send them to them. They have good benefits, it's good pay. We need our younger folks especially to get some of these jobs, and on top of that, we need the parents to urge them to get some training at Gadsden State Community College, at the Career Tech Building, at Gadsden City High School, and get some people to go to work. You will be amazed how much it would mean if we could get 400, 4,500 people to go to work. So think about that and see what you can do. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Scott, Craig Scott, was saying about the census and with the Carver Revitalization Committee on Saturday, September 5th, 2020. I believe they're going to meet at Carver Community Center, and they're going to go out to three different properties, Carver Village, Northside Home, and Johnson's Apartments. So I'm sure if they get more volunteers, they'll probably expand that, so if you can volunteer on that day to come out to help. Thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Council President Toles. I just want to say that God is good to us. He takes care of us all the time. He's going to take care of our city, he's going to take care of our problems, he's going to take care of the COVID virus. God knows everybody's hearts, and He loves each one of us, and I pray for each and every one of y'all every night when I pray for all the council, the mayor, and the citizens of Gadsden, and I know everything's going to be all right. It's all heaven.
Councilman Reed? Councilman Reed.
Yeah, I think I had quite a bit to say this morning, so I think I'll pass today.
All right. Councilman William.
Thank you, Madam President. As of just, just to follow up on Deborah's, Deb Brigato's report on, on COVID-19 and some of the updates, she provided a lot of good information. For those that are, that typically are dialed into just the case numbers, number of positive cases in Alabama as of 10 o'clock this morning, 99,926. Etowah County, number of positive cases, 2,180. Number of deaths, Alabama, 1,781, and Etowah County, 34 confirmed deaths. So again, still some opportunity for us to be smart about how we're managing this, this very unfortunate, this very contagious infectious disease, and, and just making sure that we're doing our part, not just to take care of ourselves physically and, and look inward for what's okay for us inwardly, but to look outward. And honestly, with a lot of things, that should be a theme. If you focus on you and how it affects you, you miss a lot. You miss a good bit of why there's an issue to begin with. We have to make sure we're looking outwardly and making sure that we understand how it's affecting not just us, but everybody. Had the, I won't call it an opportunity, but just had to, to attend yet another funeral. I think many of us can speak to the fact that in this season, death just tends to just be there more than, than I've seen it in my lifetime. And, and I don't think that's just coming with me getting older. I think we're just in a very horrible season right now as it relates to that. But a good friend of mine eulogized a family member, an 85-year-old great aunt of mine over the weekend. And, and one of the things that he spoke from, and one of the areas that he spoke from was Second Chronicles 7 and 14. And it's very common when we, many of us that read our Bibles know this one. If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then, then will I hear from heaven, and God will forgive their sin and will heal their land. We don't, we don't have to make it up, folks. It's, the roadmap is there for us. Let's be, let's just be sure that we're following the roadmap that exists. And, and again, my message, it continues to be clear, and I'll continue to speak to that message. Society against racism. Society is very much against racism, and we need to work every day to stomp out racism. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to remind everybody, tomorrow at 2 o'clock at First Baptist Church at the corner of 5th Street in Walnut, they will have a food giveaway. Usually have about 200 to 300 pick cars come by, and it lines up kind of early. You don't have to get there that early because it does create some traffic problems. We get some, get some problems there around Chestnut Street, but everybody's welcome. You don't have to present any identification. We're just glad to be able to help our community. I was downtown the other day, and I happened to come upon our first responders, our fire department, medics, and I was at a stop sign, so there's nobody coming, and I just sat there and watched for just a minute, and one of our medics was having to put on his PPP gear, and it had two firemen helping him put that on. I'm in my truck, I've got my air on probably medium, high, I've got it all the way cold at 60 degrees, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable. It's 90-something, probably 95 degrees, and it's probably means the heat index is probably close to 100. And I'm watching these men as they're doing this, and this guy's putting on this PPE thing over his clothing, no telling what kind of discomfort and, and heat that creates. That's the physical danger. Then he's going to walk into a house, because this is our protocol that our fire chief has created, which is a very appropriate protocol, is that one person goes in the house to make an assessment to see if the person has COVID. And then they respond thusly after, after that. So I just want to say thank you to those men and women that are doing that. They're putting themselves at great, great personal risk, then they go home to their families. I've been told it takes about, oh, I don't know, an hour to two hours to take that outfit off, because there's a certain way you take it off. You know, you can't just take it off. You have to take it off properly so you don't contaminate other people or, or yourself. So it's a constant daily reminder. Every time you hear a fire truck or medic truck, that's what they're having to do. They're having to go into one of our homes or one of our businesses, and they can't just walk in like they used to. One person goes in by himself, makes an assessment, then radios or comes out and tells the commander that's in charge on that scene what they found. So this is a very real virus. I mean, I read all the comments on social media, and I realize there are some people that have different, different opinions, but the facts are the facts, and the death rate is going up. In my little neighborhood, I have two friends that are at home with COVID, and they're really, really sick. They're doing their best not to go to the hospital. I've had a couple of friends pass away from the disease, and it wasn't like they were 90 years old and they had other problems, and then it was a miscoding that it's COVID so the hospital can, can make money. They actually died of the coronavirus because they couldn't breathe anymore, and they suffocated to death. So this is a really serious situation that we have, and we need to treat it that way. And I'm respectful to people that disagree with my opinion. I just ask to be treated in the, in the, in the same way. Our schools are starting back on a, on a virtual program for, I think, nine weeks. There's other school systems that have chosen to do it different. I think in about 14 to 20 days or so, we're going to see how all that turns out. And I applaud Tony Reddick and our Board of Education for their hard and tough decision. They're on the front lines. I know they are getting phone calls, and some of them aren't, aren't very nice, but they're making the hard decisions that I agree with, that I think has, has to be made. So thank you, Board of Education members and, and Tony Reddick. Then I want to echo Larry Avery with the census counts at Carver Community Center that Councilman Worthy talked about. Council President Toz says this all the time, and she's 100% correct. Talk is cheap. There's always people that want to talk. You don't see a lot of action, as I sit up here. Larry Avery talks, but then he has more action than he does talking. So this is just a public thank you to Larry Avery and his friends that are helping our community, not just with the census, but with other things. This is a guy that actually cares, and he puts his, his feet and his money where his mouth is. And I think that if more of us would do that, we'd probably have a lot better community. This is Saturday, September 5th. They, they're looking for volunteers. They're also looking for resources like water and things like that that'll help keep people hydrated because it's, it's still hot. So September 5th over at the Carver Community Center, and thank you, Larry Avery, for what you're doing for the city of Gadsden. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson.
Just one quick note. The, thank you to everybody who's reached out with an interest in being a part of the, the committee that was formed, the Human Relations Advisory Committee. We've got about a dozen names here. I just wanted to let everybody know, if you have any interest, anybody in the city of Gadsden, any interest in, in participating in that, you can email citycouncil@cityofgadsden.com. We'll be meeting in the coming days to kind of try to finalize the membership of that committee. So if there's anybody in the community that would like to participate in that committee, please email citycouncil@cityofgadsden.com, and we'll get your name on the list of, of potential candidates. And I'll just end with a simple comment about the census. You guys hear it every week, I won't be redundant, but the Carver Community Revitalization Committee has done a great job, not only on the census, but on voter registration. They are constantly putting on programs in this community. So again, I'll, I'll jump on the bandwagon with everybody else up here and say great job to them for, for everything they're doing. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, just to the mayor and the council, there were some demands that came from the Black Lives Matter. I turned those concerns, I don't, I don't particularly care for the word demand, but so I'll just say, I turned those concerns over to the Human Relations Committee so that they can address them, talk about them, and when they're grouped. So I just wanted them to know that we were not ignoring their demands. We were just putting them in the hands of the committee so that there can be some collaboration with the group. If there's nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.